Commissioner Mensah, you take the lead.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Very good. So, yeah, we're here today for a presentation from our Public Defense Department. Kind of the state of public defense, informational only. I'm Ty Mensah, Chair, Vice Chair, Acting Chair today of the Board of County Commissioners. We have Commissioner Edwards participating telephonically. And we have leadership from our Public Defense Department, including Patrick O'Connor, Director, see Larry Jefferson, Phil Griffith, Mia Pagnata, Jose Vargas, and Robin Martin. And then we have our County Manager and Assistant County Manager. That's Romero Chavez and Robin Campbell. That's the lineup, and I'm going to pass it over, I guess, to Pat, sure, to kind of lay it out for us.
Yeah, well, thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, everyone. It's going to do around introductions, but thank you, Commissioner, for introducing the Public Defense Management Team. Best time to be here today, take time out of their busy schedules to contribute. And much of the information that we're going over and successes that I'll highlight are largely due in part to their leadership. So they should share some of the successes. And they're experiencing a lot of the challenges, too. So Commissioner Edwards, I just want to check in with you. I'm going to pull up our PowerPoint. Just want to make sure you have the materials in front of you.
I'm good to go, Patrick. Give her the dickens.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it.
Even though I laid everybody's name out for the record, but feel free to say what the roles are, your leadership team.
Sure. So I have Larry Jefferson, the Senior Defense Attorney. He leads our Adult Felony Unit here in the office. Robin Martin, who's the Senior Defense Attorney, who leads our Juvenile Defense Division, our Involuntary Treatment Act Division, and our Tendency Division here in the office. I have Phil Griffin here, who's a Defense Attorney, who leads our District Court Division. I have Jose Vargas, who's our Fiscal Manager, and leads that department. And Mia Pagnata, who's my Executive Assistant, who leads the Administrative Unit here in the office. So I hope everyone can see our screen. Let me know if you can't. I'll just assume that my screen's hearing the words.
It works.
Yeah, it's working.
Okay, great. And so Commissioners, feel free. I was thinking about the format today. I think we have plenty of time to get through all the information. So feel free to, you know, just jump in, or obviously Romero, Robin, if you have any questions. I mean, we have plenty of time to take questions as we go. So the first slide we're taking a look at here, of course, is our bluff slide on budget. So this year has been unique and challenging in a lot of different ways. But as it pertains to budget, we have seen a unique year, frankly, for public defense. So if you, sort of looking, going left, top left, down, that's our revised budget through September this year with the 2% budget reduction that we participated in. We have actual expenditures of just under 4.5 million at this point, or about 65% spent. We have about 5 and 1/2% of incurred expenses for 2020, and our available balance is just a little over $2 million. Now, when we go into our forecasting model, what we've been using is a two-year base model to forecast end-of-year expenses for public defense. 2018 and 2019 are being used to forecast our 2020 expenditures. And if we skip over to the right, top-hand budget, you'll see what our forecast is. So right now, we are forecasting a, about a 5%, 95% budget prediction. Even though it's red on the screen, in fiscal terms, that would be in the black. So just so you're not confused as to whether or not that's in the red in the parlance of the fiscal world. It's a forecast, and I think, as Romero mentioned in an earlier board meeting, he and I have had conversations about this. Well, if this is our forecast, you know, are there opportunities there? This is conservative. And I want to at least take the time now, when we went through our 2% budget exercise reduction, we lost two staff. Based on this forecast, and some of the benefits we've seen through COVID, there hasn't been a ton. We'll get to the rest of them later, the challenges. You know, I really appreciate the board giving us the opportunity to refund a legal assistant position. We've still lost a Defense Attorney III position as a result of the exercise. But based on this forecast, it certainly was a good budget request, as solid as we can be here in public defense, based on the numbers. So, you know, we're lagging about a little over 7% behind this year, based on our prior fiscal year spend-down. So in one aspect, this year's had some positive impacts, at least on our budget. You can see we still have expenditures and hourly contracts with our panel attorneys, our conflict counsel, capacity contracts, and some of the other contracting models that, you know, I've walked this board through over the past couple of years on some of the changes that we've made. And just overall, as a theme, you know, when I went through those changes, starting three years ago, 2020 was a big target year for what I thought we would be successful, we'd see the successes of a lot of those changes. COVID, obviously, has put an asterisk beside some of those changes and what I anticipated would be successful. But as I'll show you later, some of those changes have been successful in a couple of different ways. We've been, as you know, we've been targeting and tracking what I consider to be extraordinary criminal case injustice costs. So specific cases that we know are going to be very expensive and really adversely affect our budget. And I've listed out some of those below. And right now, really, I'll highlight just one. We have one homicide trial, and that's the Martin case that we're waiting to see if that goes to trial. If so, when? Obviously, the Commission's very familiar with our limited spaces to conduct jury trials. This is a jury trial that would require well over 100 jurors to appear for a panel. So I don't know if we're going to be in that position this year. And if that bleeds into next year, then we'll have to absorb that cost, as well as at least two other of these cases next year in jury trials. And I think it's reasonable to expect at this point that we won't see those big impact costs until next year, as those, at least two of those homicide cases go to trial at cost for the department. So I'll just, I'll pause for a second and see if there's any questions that anybody has.
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner, good. How about Romero?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You're little, so I'm just going to kind of ask you. My question is about the, maybe you're going to go in this, but the panel attorney. I see the 55, I see the numbers, but, and now it looks like about 55% are on hourly, and 45% have been converted to something else. Is that, has that increased, or has that resulted in a cost savings from previous years?
Yeah. Sure. And that's not necessarily the division of work. That's just the percentages representing the actual costs. But I will show here in a slide or two, sort of the impacts of those changes on expenses incurred by the department for prior fiscal year cases. And that was really what we were targeting, was to try to capture more percentage of costs related to public defense in the year in which the cost was created, as opposed to an imbalance in costs being absorbed in future years, and the challenges that has presented in forecasting, you know, in forecasting our budget, especially, you know, in a time like this, September, October, and trying to forecast what the rest of the year's costs are going to be. I think I'll sort of, I think I'll, I think I'll get to a sort of, you know, your question here in a second, Commissioner, with with another slide.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
We're good.
Yeah. Okay, great. So I will move to the next slide, which is the slide, Commissioner, that sort of gets to your point. Now, it's a very colorful slide, and so there's some interesting statistics here. So the sort of top bar chart there, one of the things we struggled with historically was just the amount of administrative process it took to run the Public Defender's Office from a invoicing standpoint. So the amount of invoices we received on an ongoing basis, the impacts it had, not just on staff and workload, but in fiscal forecasting. So in making some of these changes over the past couple of years, these bars sort of walk you through that. So I just highlight that FY is the fiscal year 2018, and in our language, that's the year in which a cost was associated with. So criminal cases that we were assigned in 2018 that were conflict of interest cases for our panel attorneys that we had to send out. And this is the percentage of invoices that we paid in the first two quarters of 2018 compared to 2019 compared to 2020. You don't see a huge percentage change, as you can see from the bar graphs here, because that's just reflective of the percentage of the overall number of invoices. But what I can tell you is that in 2020, as compared to 2018, we processed about 50% less invoices overall, if that makes sense. So we've reduced the variable cost in the number of invoices we're processing. And so you don't see a large percentage. But what I'll highlight, and sort of the, for me, the focal point of this slide is this column here on the right, and this chart. So I'd like to just focus your attention on the Commissioner Edwards, since you can't see me, on the, on this PowerPoint slide, which is PowerPoint number three, turning your attention to the right-hand column chart entitled Panel Attorneys. So, for example, in fiscal year 2018 through the first two quarters, we spent about $342,000 in actual expenses for cases that were created in fiscal year 18. But however, we had a little over $300,000 was spent in those first two quarters for previous year's work. And so that was, it's always a challenge for us, and continues to be a challenge, just on a smaller scale. But if you compare, so the grand total of 600, almost $650,000 of the department's spending was in those first two quarters, based on prior fiscal year costs and current fiscal year costs. So if you turn your attention to 2019, and of course, in 2018 is when we started to make some changes, 2019, you sort of start to see some of those changes, and sort of the net effect and the impact of those changes through the first two quarters. So we had fiscal year 2019, and sort of a note here is in 2018, the board supported three requests for additional staff. So our current fiscal year assignments in the Public Defender's Office, we increased those in-house assignments. So we were able to take more cases and not send as many cases out to the panel. So it makes a lot of sense that in 2019, for those fiscal year costs in the first two quarters, you'd see the difference of 109,000 as opposed to 342,000. But specifically, you see the decrease in prior fiscal year 2019 expenses in the first two quarters of $180,000 as opposed to 307. And this year, just in a further extension, as we tried to make some additional improvements, where our first two quarters of prior fiscal year expenses are $116,000. So we're talking about a little over 60% reduction in costs from prior fiscal year expenses associated with attorneys that are outside of our office, that are doing great work, that are serving our clients, that we legally can't represent. But that's a, that's a huge difference in terms of, you know, such as a forecast in September, the end of September, it's almost October, of this year, as to what we think we're going to finish, you know, how our year's going to fit, our financial year's going to finish, as opposed to years past. And so when I mentioned earlier, this was sort of a goal or a theme, in terms of financially structuring the office a little bit differently. 2020 was a real target for me, where I thought we would really start to see some improvements. And I think, for me at least, this is the byproduct of a lot of, a lot of team members here in the office. Each and every member of the office, whether they realize or not, are contributing to that. But there are certainly a lot of effort to get to this point. I don't want to, I want to make sure I'm able to lift up the entire department, because it really is a collective effort. So I want to pause again. Commissioner Mensah, if that answered your question, or if anybody else has any questions about, about those numbers.
Commissioner Edwards, anything?
No, no, I'm good, sir.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'd forgotten about the adding the stat. Those numbers are hard to compare, because you had, you were, as you say, you were able to take in more cases in-house and had to refer less cases out. So the numbers, you have to analyze it a little deeper to figure out whether or not the, I was talking about the, you know, the conversion from all hourly contracts to the fixed contracts, and and whether that was yielding the fruit that you were hoping it would, you know, by having only half of those on hourly now instead of all of them.
Yes. I mean, in terms of making those contract changes, the contractors are happy. I haven't had any, you know, complaints from the contractors, obviously. You know, it reduces some of their opportunity cost in billing, so it's sort of beneficial to them as well. And ultimately, as I, you know, I think I communicated, you know, when I was making these changes, those changes are being done to make the process smoother, but, and make our department a little more stable. It was not being done to, with anything else other than the best public defense in mind. And so there, there are financial incentives for contractors to try a case, to go to trial, to do all the things that they need to do. And if they're undercompensated, to make an appeal to to our Advisory Board for additional compensation. But it certainly has stabilized. The volume of work has come down, you know, as you mentioned, with additional attorney staff. And then especially this year, which is sort of my next slide, is, you know, it's the overall decrease in appointments to the office, conflict or not.
Okay, I'm good.
I think Romero has a question, Commissioner.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
Patrick, it was pretty evident, at least from my point of view, can you hear me?
Yes.
The, the model that you presented back in, I believe, 2016, 2017, and by the numbers, see the success as to how you have, you know, reduced the, what I call the uncertainty with panel attorneys, because at that point, we didn't know how and how much and when the bills were coming in. So we always look for, you know, remember that balloon surprise at the end of the year in some instances. And the question that I have for you is, the 116,472, which is prior to fiscal year 2020, is that only for cases that were generated in 2019, or include cases that goes beyond 2018, perhaps 2018 and 17?
Yeah, the latter, Romero. So it's not, I don't have that data here to show you a breakdown of, you know, if they were in 2019, 2018, 2017, we just consider it all prior years.
All prior years.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a composition, right? So if you looked at our extraordinary case chart on our first budget page, and one of those cases, two of those cases are 2015 cases.
Right.
So it's a, you know, you know, which is understandable. I mean, we're never going to, you know, when we come against, when we, when we're appointed to big cases, homicides, cases that take a year to two years to do a thorough job from our perspective, we're always going to have that.
Absolutely, yeah. No, I understand that. I was just curious, because I knew that one of your strategies behind that was to clear the backlog of all the, you know, the, those cases, the, what I call was carryovers.
Right. Yeah. And Jose probably has a finer point that I think he wants to make.
I don't have the set number per fiscal year, but I can, I can tell you, Romero, that for fiscal year 18, the prior fiscal year 18 cases went from 2010 to 2017. The 2019 went from 2012 to 2018. And then for 2020, is, I think, one case from 2014, several cases, about half a dozen cases, 15, but most of them were 16, 17, and 2019.
Yeah.
We're reducing the number of the long-term cases as we go.
Romero, I have to pipe, I have to pipe in and say that time is on the defense's side. And the public defender are not there to, to run cases through the system. They're there to use the rules and get the best result for their client, and advocate zealously, and meet their ethical obligations, which does not always mean. So the public defender should not be judged by whether there's old cases left in the system. That might mean they're doing an excellent job. It's case by case, obviously. Might mean they're doing it.
I understand. Yeah. Sorry if I came across the, the cases need to be resolved at a timely matter. That's not my intent. The intent of my question was, because, Patrick, it was a backlog when the new model was presented four years ago. And that was one of the strategies, is to eliminate the back billing, not necessarily the clearing the cases. That was the reason for my question, but thank you.
I would, I would like to add to that, that just because the case started in a prior year, any work done on that case could be paid for in the year the work is done, which is a normal accounting practice. What had been happening, in my understanding, is that the entire cost, you know, five years, if a case took five years to come to conclusion, then all five years were billed in the year that it was resolved. And that's what we want to get away from.
Yeah, you weren't required to. You could, if you were a lawyer and you needed payment, you could ask to get an interim payment. But if you wanted to, just float it till the end of the case. This is years ago.
Right. We'd rather see it go.
Right. Yes, and we, and we would, too, because it gives us a confidence in my, in our first budget sheet on a forecast. As confident as we can be, there's still going to be some, some variable costs, but yeah, much more challenging. So I'll just highlight real quickly, and then get to the next slide on professional services. Professional services, obviously, being all the other work that's required for us to do our jobs as experts, investigations, transcripts, interpreter services, all those things that, that come with a full public defense and a full defense of a client. We've seen, you know, 2020 is just been a really strange year all around. We've seen a decline in expert services. I have some anecdotal explanations. Part of those are, you know, experts have been challenging, some experts during COVID that are high-risk, that aren't accepting work. But one of, again, sort of, when we look at costs going down, you know, in 2018, we hired our first full-time public defender here, investigator here at the Public Defender's Office. So, you know, that was, you know, billables and invoices that we were not seeing anymore in 2019. So, you know, expert services and professional services are still going to have, in my opinion, similar rollover costs, as Romero pointed out, different than that of the panel attorneys. But it's much more manageable, because we're not having both at the same time. So I just wanted to highlight that, in case you had any questions, before we move on to the next, the next slide. Okay.
Not hearing or seeing any. I don't have any questions, so.
Okay. So.
Neither do I.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So our next slide here is sort of a year in review of workload, as it pertains to client. There's plenty of other workload, just to be clear, but this is as to cases in which our department has been appointed by the court to represent in a criminal proceeding. So there's a lot of numbers on this chart, but I want to frame it in the right way, so you can, so when I walk through this, you're, you're tracking, and if you're unable to, just let me know. So we're, you know, these are, I wanted to take a look and present to you on comparable caseloads and workload in August 2020 compared through August of 2019, to get a sense of where our workload is for the year. So that's, you know, we're 66% essentially through the year. So when we're looking at these statistics, it sort of gives you a sense on where we're at. 66% would be where we were last year. Anything under that is a reduction in workload, if that makes sense. So sort of here at the top is our Adult Superior Court, and in-house being our in-house staff that are representing clients. We're at 52% in 2020 through August compared to August of 2019. So that's about 14% less cases that we've been appointed to in, in our department. Our number of conflict cases, again, those are appointments where we're legally barred from representing a client due to conflict of interest, realized about 9% less in cases in conflict of interest cases. And our overage cases. So that's a category in which, due to the Indian Defense Standards, we receive the maximum number of cases that our attorneys could receive in a given month. And we had to send cases out to our, our conflict panel, even though they weren't conflict of interest cases. We just reached our internal maximum, set by the Washington State Bar Association, and 41% less overages this year compared to last year. One sort of note here on these, on these numbers is, we did have a retirement earlier this year from a longtime attorney, Jim Shackleton, who was with the Public Defender's Office for 27 years. And he retired earlier this year and took a much-needed, long, long vacation and, and used it all up. So that's what he was entitled to do, and I encouraged him to do that, and we had to reassign his caseload. So that overage number has a little bit of a note behind it to explain it. But again, our target, as presented in the past, is my theme, that our team knows that if you're poor in Thurston County and you're accused of a crime, we will represent you here in this office. And if we don't have enough attorneys here, then I'll keep advocating for enough staff to represent everybody in this community that needs one of our in-house attorneys. We're getting closer to that, and I, again, really appreciate the board's investment in public defense over, over these past three or four years, and we're seeing the results. So the next category is our District Court cases. Well, let me pause for a second. Do those, does that, anybody have any questions about just sort of the percentages, and does that make sense or not? Okay.
I'm okay.
Okay. Okay, when we turn our attention to District Court, you can see that we're at 34%. So we're 31% less cases this year through August compared to last. We have 20% less conflicts. That's the 45.12%. And 48% less overages. So in this slide, red is good. And yellow's good, too, but. So in the, in this slide, red is good, um, uh, and yellow's good too, but red's great, I guess. If I put a finer point on it. Um, so, you know, obviously overall here, and, um, we'll talk about this in a second, is the trend, uh, for, uh, twenty twenty has been less assignments, and I think, um, you guys are familiar with sort of all the things that have been going on with law enforcement and some of the restrictions they've put on, both at the county level and our municipal level. So we're not seeing as many cases. Um, in our juvenile division, uh, we've seen, um, ta, about ten percent less cases for our in-house attorney. Uh, we have seen nine percent more conflict. We've got some more looking in to do, uh, to figure out what's going on there. And about thirty-seven percent less overage cases in, in juvenile court, uh, this year. One additional, um, uh, attorney that's working in Robin's unit is our involuntary treatment act attorney that, um, I know I briefed you on, uh, previously. Uh, and this is, and this is a new year for, for that, uh, discipline here in our office. And we've set up a data tracking system, um, this year to track all the data. Um, and I'm not ready to present on that just yet, but I just wanted to let you know that, um, that attorney is working full-time, serving involuntary treatment act hearings. And we should be in a position after this year to, I have one full year's worth of data, uh, to present to you at some point next year in terms of workload, composition, and what types of cases, uh, 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 he's seen. So, um, you know, sort of overall, uh, twenty twenty has, um, if there is a silver lining, at least for us, is there have been less cases. So each one of the staff attorneys, um, and our professional staff aren't redlining every month. That's the way I look at it, which traditionally, every staff member that works here, uh, and all our professional staff have operated right at the very, right at the very top of capacity, every, every month, month in, month out. But just because they have less cases does not mean, uh, there's less work. Um, and as I'll touch on here in a second, COVID, um, and all that comes with COVID as it pertains to public defense has created a lot of other work. Um, but before I move to that slide, are there any, um, questions about, uh, this data or trends or comments? Okay.
No. Okay, nope, good.
No, no.
Okay, great. Uh, well, I will move on to, uh, some of the challenges and, um, uh, it's, needless to say, um, it's been a challenging year for, uh, for everyone, but, uh, for public defense, um, it's been uniquely challenging, uh, I think, um, in some aspects. But I just wanted to highlight some of the challenges and my, my colleagues and, uh, other members of the management team can, uh, chime in. Um, and, and if I missed something or, uh, speak on behalf of some of the challenges that they've seen. But, yeah, obviously for me, employee safety has been at the, uh, forefront of, um, of my thoughts and, and actions that we've had to take. You know, our staff as public defenders, we're not good at staying away from our clients. Uh, we're, we're, we like to be close to them, um, we work in the jail. Uh, we have, uh, a lot of folks that come in and out of our office pre-COVID. And, you know, obviously my, my top concern was, um, uh, employee safety and keeping our staff safe and having to set up a system in which we can safely do our jobs and, and represent our clients, um, as we're required to do. And it has, it has not been easy. Now, I don't think that's me.
Who is that phone? Who is that?
Who's that? I, I don't know who's that.
I think it might be Commissioner Edwards, but it's fine. Um, so, uh, you know, that's been, we, you know, obviously developed our own, uh, safe start plan here in the department. And, um, I feel like we've had really good buy-in. It took some time, uh, uh, I think for the community to buy in. Uh, but I'm really proud that our, our organization and our leaders that you see here on the screen, uh, took it, uh, as seriously as, um, as, as I did from day one, ensuring that their employees are safe. Um, because, you know, going into the courtroom, uh, presents, you know, specific challenges for us, um, dealing with the public, being close to our clients, having to have a client, uh, a confidential client conversation less than six feet apart in a courtroom. Um, there's, there was not a playbook on how to do that, and there still frankly really, really isn't. Um, but, you know, we, uh, have been very fortunate so far. Um, but we need to continue to stay, uh, maintain our diligence in, in keeping our staff safe. And, um, general operations is, has been a challenge. Obviously, like every other county office and department, we, uh, we were close to the public. And that presented, um, you know, a tremendous amount of, of challenges for attorneys to continue to communicate with their clients, stay in touch with their clients. Um, as the economy, you know, took a turn, a lot of our clients lost their jobs and then they didn't have, you know, they didn't have cell phones and still don't, many of them. Um, but then not being able to physically come here to the office to, to see their attorney, um, as their, as their criminal case continued on, um, is, was incredibly challenging. Um, not just for our staff, but, um, for our clients. It's just a lot of uncertainty, um, during, uh, the initial months and, and still is for, for some clients. Um, it is a tremendous challenge, uh, not unique, uh, just to us, I understand that, but for the work that we do and the ethical obligations that attorneys have to always keep their clients apprised of what's going on, to be able to continue to communicate about their case. And if our clients weren't, uh, in custody during, um, during those initial months of COVID, they couldn't get into court, um, even if they wanted to resolve their cases. So it's just a tremendous amount of, uh, challenges here operationally. Um, we are currently operating, uh, obviously open to the public, but, um, with sort of minimum capacity in terms of how many clients we are able to come into their office and actually see their attorney. Uh, we have, uh, retrofitted one attorney, uh, office into a second conference room. So we're, uh, seeing clients throughout the day, but one at a time, uh, with two maximum. And our lobby's, uh, capacity is at two. So, um, you know, we've had to make a lot of changes, um, internally, just in serving the public. And that's been challenging, whereas before, uh, pre-COVID, you know, clients could always stop by. We were an open office and, and welcoming office to come in, see their attorney, drop off paperwork. And so much has had to change in terms of preparation and calendaring. Probably one of the other biggest challenges has been the suspension of jury trials, um, throughout COVID, um, you know, unique scenario, uh, to say the least, but, um, fundamental to the criminal justice system is trials. And, um, as I, you know, I know you've been briefed on by other stakeholders. Uh, we, we have a significant backlog of cases as a result of, um, that suspension. I think the suspension was the right decision, uh, understandably by our, uh, Supreme Court and supported a suspension. But we are, uh, all of us, uh, are continuing and will continue to deal with the backlog of cases for, uh, for probably the next twelve to eighteen months. It's just an educated guess, but, um, Superior Court, as you know, is back up and running with trials. Um, and we're doing one a week, but we still have a tremendous amount of backlog. Uh, District Court has, has not had a jury trial yet. They hope to have one in November, um, and, um, our juvenile court is having bench trials now. Um, so I think we're slowly starting to address the backlog, but we're, uh, frankly nowhere, uh, near, um, being caught up. And I don't think it's reasonable to expect the justice system at this point to be caught up, um, within the next six months. I say, sort of emphasize that as, you know, I highlight what a silver lining in twenty twenty. But I am cautious about twenty-one and the impacts of, um, the fiscal impacts and not just the impacts to our clients' lives of as we go into next year and we're, you know, continuing to deal with this backlog. And of course, obviously, we've had cases coming into the system throughout COVID that we may see a, a real rise, um, in, in twenty-one in terms of expense. Uh, as I sort of mentioned, challenging, uh, has been client communication. And, um, uh, Phil, Larry and Robin can certainly speak to, uh, any of these challenges. But it's been really challenging. It's been really hard on our staff, um, you know, I, uh, especially for clients that are in custody, but, uh, also for clients that are out of custody and just being able to communicate with them. Um, I did, you know, authorize the, the purchase of cell phones for all our attorneys because, you know, we have a, uh, a teleworking schedule, just as every other, every other office and department and clients need to get a hold of their attorneys. So that's been, I think, one positive, um, it's probably long overdue frankly, uh, in, uh, in twenty twenty that, uh, the, our staff have, uh, access to a cell phone so they can be, uh, reached by their clients that are either in custody or out of custody. But it's been really challenging. It's taking its toll. So I, you know, I, I say these things in reference to, you know, even though we're receiving less cases this year, it doesn't mean, um, that there's more time to do things. It takes additional time to do the work of being a public defender, um, in this environment, whether it's getting a hold of your, your client, having a, a meeting with your, a physical meeting with your client, having to make that arrangement, having to schedule a court hearing, getting in the court. Um, all these things are just presented, you know, unique challenges throughout COVID. You know, as you, uh, are aware, you know, obviously, uh, and I think Corrections has done a, a, a really good job. They've taken appropriate steps through COVID to limit access, but that limit access comes, um, comes at a cost. And there, uh, has been challenging to get into the jail, um, with the frequency and reliability that we used to. We have had to go through a, a lot of effort to try to set up different ways to communicate with clients who are in custody. Um, we're doing the best we can, but that's just another challenge and an impact that COVID's had. And that's outside of the outbreak in the jail. That's just today, for example, um, that, you know, we just don't have the same access and it's understandable. Um, I don't know if there's a great solution, but it certainly is adding to ours, uh, from the attorney's workload that previously weren't there. And I have to balance that, um, and actually our, our State Bar Association's Council on Public Defendants just, defendants just issued an opinion, uh, to the State Bar Association, asking, you know, public defender directors around the state, um, and giving them guidance on being able to adjust those, uh, public defender caseloads based on all these additional workload impacts as a result of COVID taking extra time to do something that, um, previously wouldn't take a lot of time to do. So we'll continue to monitor that and I may have to make some adjustments to attorney caseload based on COVID time spent, um, as opposed to straight line case by case by case and, and doing case counting. Now, teleworking, um, I, I, I suspect we're probably not that much different than many other offices and departments. Um, but I will say that, uh, uh, it has worked fairly well, um, in our office and department, excuse me, in our department. Uh, we have, we never operate over fifty percent of any given week with staff. Certainly created a lot of challenges as well. Um, and we have spent, um, a fair amount of, uh, uh, CARES fund, um, CARES funds to outfit our staff to do their job while teleworking. Um, but it is, um, you know, I think there's been some, some opportunities there as well. Um, but at the same time, you know, it has an effect on office culture too. Um, and that's something that, you know, we've been talking a little bit about is, you know, office culture and morale and, um, you know, team building in, in this teleworking environment, um, where, you know, there's some staff that, uh, I haven't seen since March physically, uh, or if I've seen them, it's been in, in passing, uh, because they're teleworking. But at the end of the day, um, what, what I'm probably most proud about, and, um, I'm sure the managers are as well, is we have, the quality of public defense hasn't gone down as a result of, of some of these things. So that, at the end of the day, is something that, you know, we, we need to always value. If folks are teleworking, you know, are we still delivering quality public defense? And, um, and I know that we are. And, and I, you know, there are things in teleworking that I think we're just going to continue in the future, um, that work for us. Uh, virtual court proceedings have also been very challenging, uh, for everyone, but specifically, you know, speaking for us, uh, it, it presents a lot of challenges. Um, you know, as my team knows, um, you know, I, I just fundamentally believe court should be in court and people should be in court to have their court hearings. Obviously, we've had to make, um, significant changes, uh, to court proceedings and using, uh, Zoom platforms and other virtual platforms, uh, to, to conduct court, uh, and they're slow. So this is sort of another, uh, point on attorney workload. Uh, Zoom hearings take time and, um, and that's something we have to sort of factor in when we're looking at attorney workloads. But, uh, overall, I, I think we, we have progressed. Um, I think we still have some expectations that will continue to progress with, with virtual court. Um, but, you know, philosophically from my perspective, once we are able to get out of a Zoom environment, um, to do court proceedings, I'd like to see us go back to in-court proceedings, uh, on behalf of our clients. Now, the other challenges, uh, you know, obviously, you know, going through that budget reduction and, uh, losing a staff attorney, um, in our felony division. Um, luckily, due to some of these, um, COVID reductions, we, it hasn't had that great of an impact. But going forward, uh, given the amount of, uh, backlog cases that we've been made aware of, um, that are going to be, you know, at some point coming into the system, we're going to need to be able to meet that demand. Um, and, um, you know, being down one attorney, um, you know, obviously puts us at a little bit disadvantage, but, um, hopefully we can have some more conversations going forward about opportunities we may have to, um, uh, to address that issue. But I want to pause for a second and, uh, give, uh, my team, uh, an opportunity to lift up anything from their perspective on challenges that, uh, that they've seen from their respective units this year. Guys? Okay, you don't have to if you don't want to.
Oh, it's not that we don't want to, we don't want to be rude. So why don't you call on us about which one you want to talk?
Well, Larry, why don't you speak, uh, why don't you speak on, uh, client communication and how challenging that's been for your team?
Um, well, that has been really tough. I'm glad that, uh, Patrick was able to authorize everyone in my unit to get a cell phone. Uh, we've even had some admin staff get a, a cell phone because communication has been very difficult. It's been very difficult to go, uh, to the jail. The amount of booths have been restricted, uh, to, to two. So that means you're competing with every other, uh, person for those booths, whether it's a DOC coming in to visit someone, another attorney or another agency. So that's had a big effect. Um, it's been a bit of effect on attorneys, even though they have that cell phone, you'll literally be on the phone with one client, but four clients may be calling you at that same time. Uh, and so, uh, attorneys have had to make some sacrifices in their evening times, uh, because they know that it's critical that they get important, uh, get in touch with their clients. Um, you know, and we know that public defense is hard work, but we don't expect you to be working at eight or nine o'clock at night, you know, all the time. And so people have had to make sacrifices in that area. It's also been sacrifices, um, can, with, you know, children. Uh, that has been, it's, it's been huge, uh, effect. Uh, and so we tried to do our best to be accommodating, uh, for folks. But I also want to take the opportunity to say, uh, three things. One thing that we're excited about and that we want to take advantage of is that, uh, we're not redlining. And since we're not redlining, uh, we want to do a pilot project for the preliminary appearance calendar and we want to assign an attorney to that.
I'm getting, I'll get, I'll get to that, Larry.
Oh, wonderful. Uh, and then I guess I'll talk about the two other, uh, difficulties. Uh, one is, uh, the, we've heard a lot in the public about cash bail. And, um, and we've entered into a, a project, the APPR project, uh, which is a five-year project, and we're in our first year. And so from my, uh, point of view, I'd like to see more progress, uh, with, within that. Uh, and so it's been frustrating for us as public defenders to have information that's been available from the project that doesn't seem, uh, to be getting to all, all the parties. So that's something that we're going to be working on because, believe me, uh, when we had the outbreak of, of COVID nineteen, people, uh, were asking their attorneys, uh, to help them get released, as anyone would, because that was a source of a pandemic. So that was a particularly frustrating, uh, process for us to go through. And I'm hoping that we're going to be able to work on that because it shouldn't matter the amount of money that you have in your pocket whether you get in or out of jail. Um, it should be just or unjust. Uh, the other thing, um, that I was going to talk about was just time, and I guess I've already, uh, talked about that. But, um, uh, just because we have less cases doesn't mean that they're taking less time. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Larry. Phil, Robin, um, why don't you give, uh, anything you want to add in terms of what you've seen? in terms of what you've seen challenges wise from you and your, and your practice and your, and your, and your people?
Well, I'll, I'll be brief, pal. Just one ongoing challenge that we've had back since March and the whole pandemic kind of hit hard is, is access to the court system, especially for out of custody people. In district court, we deal with a lot of people that have multiple driving under the influence charges. And when you have multiple driving under the influence charges, the court requires that you have some sort of alcohol monitoring, monitoring device. Often that is a device you wear on your body. Often it's also a device that you have in your automobile. And those devices cost money. And not only are people being asked to post bail to get out, a lot of the times money that they don't have, they're asking to pay for these devices for a definite, indefinite amount of time. And without any trials looming overhead and without offers that are acceptable to our clients, oftentimes offers that require them to go back into jail, which isn't safe at this time, it's causing a significant financial hardship on our clients. And without agreements from prosecutors, it's oftentimes difficult to get them back in front of a court for the court to reconsider those types of conditions, just because for a while, there wasn't any calendar for them to get on. And now that there are calendars, they're very limited due to court time as well as wanting to keep in court time as, as limited as they can in terms of how many people are there. So still without ongoing trials, that's, that's an ongoing challenge that we face on a weekly, almost daily basis. So our team's working hard with motions and other avenues to try to address that, but that's going to be slow, slow work in progress. But I'm proud of my team for, for trying to get people in, into contact treatment and trying to find other financial avenues for them to remain out of jail.
Ask Phil a question real quick?
Sure.
Phil, you said, or I think Pat said that the trials for district court, like maybe November, are you waiting for the new space? Or is there some other creative solution that the district court's coming up with to try to get a trial underway?
They are waiting on the new space.
Okay. That's I figured. There's no space over there now.
Right. Robin, you want to lift up any issues that you want to share?
Sure. You know, our, our challenges have been a little different. We don't have jury trials largely in our unit, with the exception of a couple a year usually in ITA cases. And our courts have been running pretty smoothly as largely as they were before, virtually for dependency cases and ITA cases and in-person for the juvenile cases. There have been some changes to the calendars to reduce the number of people in the courthouse at a given time and to reduce the number of people waiting in a Zoom hearing at a given time for our dependency cases. But since about mid-May, early June, we've really been chugging along at a mostly normal rate. There have been, I think, a reduction in juvenile case filings, both because of COVID and the restrict, restricted access to court, but also because kids aren't in school. They haven't been in school since mid-March. And that is a source of a lot of referrals. Same with the dependency cases because children haven't been in school, they haven't been in daycare. A lot of our referrals have been down to the department and there have been fewer new filings. Fortunately, access to detention hasn't been restricted the way it has at the adult jail. The attorneys are still able to go in and visit with their clients as often as we ever did. Dependency parents fortunately mostly have been provided with phones as a means of communication because parent-child visitation in person was stopped entirely due to COVID. And so the department has been facilitating phones for our clients and that has enabled me to actually have better contact with my clients. And our virtual hearings have increased my client's participation in their court hearings because, of course, they all largely have difficulty with transportation and getting to and from court. So there have been some odd kind of fringe benefits, I guess, to the way that we've structured our, our client communication and our court hearings in our units. The one issue that remains is our ITA attorney's ability to have visual communication with their clients before court. And that's based on what the facilities are able to provide us. But our attorneys get a lot of information when they are able to see their clients. And of course, their clients are able to trust what their attorneys are telling them and that they're representing them to the best of their abilities when they cannot see their attorneys before they appear in the courtroom. So that's something we're still working on.
Pat, I want to give you a heads up. You got five minutes?
I'm watching. Don't worry.
And I'm a hard stop at three, so.
It's okay. I'll be quick. I'll be quick. We've got a lot of opportunities. Larry's already pointed to one, which is a pilot project. We're going to start to have a better pre-trial justice system in adult court. Two, Commissioner, you're already aware of it, and so is Romero. I'm sure you'll communicate that to your colleagues. It's a pursuit of a, a resource center here in Thurston County. We have an upcoming meeting on more exploration on, on those issues. We are going to start hopefully sometime in November. I don't have a specific day, an after-hours clinic here at the office where our volunteer attorneys will help clients, former clients or non-clients, remove their legal financial obligations off their record so they can start to become debt-free and, and leave that form of imprisonment behind. And I already tucked, I touched a little bit on sustainability on caseloads. Something that I'm, I'm concerned about, I'll be honest, as we continue to operate and, and do the best we can in this COVID environment and all the time and restraints and challenges that you, you've heard. So I'll stop talking. There's a couple minutes left for any additional questions. I'm laughing to myself because I said, well, I don't know if I can fill an hour. No, it's still an hour.
There you go.
Yeah.
Can you pull your slide down? Just, it helps me to see everybody and see hands or manage comments. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Edwards, anything to, to, to close out with the public defense team?
Yes, sir. I have a, just a, a comment on one thing. I hope all the cellphone activity has been billed to COVID, the purchase and the billing. But as we're running out of time here, Larry, I've had Larry and Patrick and Jose to name just a few of the team that's working this issue. I have to say, I've been here for almost four years now, and you don't know how, how much better things are today than they were when I came here. I'm just going to let it go at that. And I, I don't want to try to cover everybody. I guess Phil and Robin are here as well. But I can't say enough about how well I think that you're doing if you want to compare to where we were a few years ago. So I, I don't, I think Commissioner Hutchings probably feels that same way. And, and Commissioner Mensah has only been with us a couple of years now, but he knows the whole thing from the inside. So I think you've got a supportive group of commissioners here that are always interested in whatever helps you do a better job. And I will say one thing Phil brought out, but I, I hope that we are not taking clients, I guess, in and out of jail as part of a negotiation, trying to get some kind of a settlement. That kind of worries me that we would even think of doing that. But anyway, great job, and thank you very much.
Romero or Robin, anything for close out?
No, I don't have any. So just, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the good work.
Right. Ditto. You're, you're doing a great job. And the management of the finances are just night and day. So thank you so much for that.
Well, thank you guys. Thanks for, thanks for giving us a chance here to, to meet. And we have a lot more to say. And, you know, I'll just say this. You know, I'm, you know, I, I may be the director of this office, but all the great work comes from everybody else who's here. And a lot of them you don't see on the screen. So it's an honor just to, just to be in the position I'm in to speak for them. So thanks for your support.
I did what Commissioner Edwards said and, and Robin, and really excited to hear about some of the new idea. I mean, some of these I was familiar with. I wasn't familiar with the, the clinics, you know, the, for post-conviction stuff. As a private attorney, I got calls about that a lot. I tried to steer people in the right direction, but there's a lot of need for that. So that's, that's cool. And then I know we had to scuttle our LFO forgiveness day. And hopefully when COVID is, allows it, we can revisit that because I think that was, that was a great idea too that you guys were on the forefront of. So we'll get that going in 2021, hopefully.
Agreed.
All right. With that, anything else? I'm going to adjourn today's meeting and see you guys down the road.
Okay. Thank you all.